All right, I called an order. Our city council special workshop meeting Tuesday, March 2nd. Second item on the agenda.
Waiting on Tim's next time.
Is a discussion, possible action regarding the trial service agreement between the city and Neutron Holdings. Who's taking the lead on that? Leroy, are you introducing?
Justin will start us off and then we will go to our guest speaker, Mr. Greenleaf.
Okay, Justin.
Yes, sir. We had a virtual presentation from Mr. Greenleaf a couple of weeks ago. And he was able to answer a lot of the, or all of the questions we had. And if you've ever ridden one of the Lime scooters in Oklahoma City, it's a, it's a super helpful way to get about town. And Lime has some really interesting ways that they've kind of improved their service over the last couple of years from when they initially launched. I'll let Rob talk about the rest of the stuff. But yes, as someone who has actually ridden them a few times in Oklahoma City, they are helpful and fun and I've enjoyed it. So, Rob, I'll let you take over.
Thank you, everybody, for having me today. So, I'm here to speak about Lime. We started off about three years ago, 2018, in the summer of 2018 in Oklahoma City. And after we established our warehouse there and set up our services, we very quickly moved into neighboring cities, Edmond, Tulsa, Jenks, Norman, and Bartlesville. I also manage four states, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Missouri, Kansas, and currently operate Little Rock and St. Louis. And out of OKC, Tulsa, Little Rock, and St. Louis, where we have sort of established, and we've been there for a long time, and we're now expanding out into surrounding cities. Something we intended on doing last year, but as you all know, for obvious reasons, we had to put a halt on things. Luckily, in terms of our business last year, we were granted essential services as an essential services company. So, we were able to operate effectively about a month after shutting down in April. We shut down in March and started up in April. So, now we're kind of back to normal. We're hoping this year with, you know, the new normal and with whatever ends up happening with COVID and what we're allowed to do, that we'll be able to slowly start expanding into other local cities. Currently, I believe, we believe 75 to 100 scooters would be a good amount. Now, I know that sounds like a lot, and we're more than happy to discuss potentially a smaller amount. But the reality is, once these scooters are deployed, they'll be in fours and fives throughout the city. And over time, with the algorithm that will understand where riders are looking for scooters, potentially spread out even more, very quickly, the thought of 100 scooters won't be too much of an issue, since the majority of the time, they won't be necessarily all downtown. If they are downtown in the morning, they'll quickly disperse while they're there. So, how we're going to run, or how we would run operations here is with local Lime juicers, as we call them. They're juicers because they charge our Limes for us. The idea is the same rider app that you would download to ride Lime. If you're cleared to be a juicer, the app will have an alternate function. When you hit a button, it switches over to a juicer map. And on that map will be scooters popping up that are in need of charging or in need of maintenance, being pulled out of the community so that we can fix them and put them back in safely. We also have local operators, our full-time employees, who are based in Oklahoma City. They, although they're based in Oklahoma City, depending on the shift, they are assigned certain cities. So, one guy might drive up to Edmond and potentially Guthrie, or just drive directly to Guthrie and then make his way over to Enid or some other cities that will be launching soon. And this will happen several times a week. And then as summer or spring warms up and summer comes along, pretty much every day, there will be somebody in the market working with our juicers, collecting potentially broken scooters and making sure everything is properly deployed. Customer service, and I'll kind of go over this a little later, but ultimately, we have a variety of ways folks can get hold of us. Some cities tie us into their 311, so that when folks call about traffic problems or other city-related issues, they can also talk about Lime and those are forwarded to us. But otherwise, there's an 800 number on all of our scooters, as well as an EMO address that they can contact. Of course, if they happen to have the app, they can report problems with scooters or just report any type of concerns regarding Limes through that as well. Fleet maintenance, I kind of covered this earlier, but ultimately, our scooters will be fixed in Oklahoma City at our warehouse. However, you might notice, our guys driving around in white vans, I've got one parked outside right now. And occasionally, they might pull a scooter into the van to tighten the brakes and tune something up real quick and then put it back on the scooter. But majority, if not 80% of the fixes actually have to take place back at our warehouse. And then logistics-wise, currently, as I mentioned earlier, we are operating in the cities I listed, but we will be targeting to move into all markets we possibly can, just to sort of connect the ability for folks who are used to riding Limes in state, Oklahoma City, or in Edmond, have that same experience in Guthrie. And one day, as we start to consolidate all of these cities, have the ability to drive back and forth, ride back and forth between cities, knowing that if they enter the neighboring city, there will be a scooter to bring them back across the border home or from work. So, in terms of how we get messages out, this is, this is going to relate to rules, in-app messaging, all sorts of ways we can communicate to the rider. Initially, when they sign up, when a rider signs up, they are forced to go through a variety of steps. We can add slides in here if there's a specific, unique to Guthrie rule that we want to make sure is message to the riders. There also are sort of in-app messages, so this is sort of a slide. But if you don't have the app open, or even if you do, and there's a message that's supposed to pop up, maybe because you're riding into a zone you shouldn't be, they will pop up like text messages as well. And of course, when you're riding, you may not have, most likely, your phone available, let alone paying attention to it buzzing. So, we have other methods to notify the public about how to ride or where not to ride through physical signage, if the city is interested, or certain private property or businesses that want to keep riders out of their area. An example in Oklahoma City would be the Federal Building of Memorial, Botanic, Marier Botanic Gardens, Scissor Tail Park, where you're not allowed to, for obvious reasons, ride around there. So, aside from us zoning out the areas in the map, which literally shuts the scooter down within 10 to 25 feet, we also have physical real-world sandwich, A-frame sandwich stands, 8 by 10s or street signs that we can put up that further reinforce the message, "Do not enter here." In terms of actually entering a zone they shouldn't, there's a couple of things we can do. In Tulsa, for example, in the Arch District by the ballpark, the entire area is a no-park zone, except for about a dozen or so pockets where they can park. So, instead of parking in front of Bob's Coffee Shop, because you like to go there every day, you're now forced to go to the end of the block where on the corner, there's a huge allotted area for scooters where you can actually lock your scooter, so you're not being charged anymore and walk away from it. We also turned that area into a slowdown zone. They love the scooters, they love the fact that folks ride scooters there, but just to kind of keep it safer, they want it to be slowed down. So, that same area that's a no-park zone, it's about a two-block by a four-block swath in front of the ballpark. You can only go 10 miles an hour instead of 15. And then once you exit the area, within however many seconds, it'll pick back up and let you go to 15 miles an hour. And these are just some of the zoning capabilities we have. So, aside from social media and educating folks on the more broader rules of riding scooters, let alone the potentially local, specific rules and places they shouldn't go, we also host in-person first-ride events. And this can happen, let's say, once a quarter. It can happen monthly, especially in the sort of early stages of being in a city. And the idea here is, we have another slide action on this, but the idea here is that we will show up to a street festival you might have, a food, an art and wine festival, potentially on college campuses when there's student orientation, and host an event with a big space blocked off so that customers can ride scooters within a safe parking lot, for example, with helmets that they end up taking home with them, if they choose to keep them, brand-new helmets, of course. And we're able to then show them how to ride properly, how to ride safely, and other things about potentially Guthrie that they should know in terms of riding their scooters. This also gives folks a safe space to test out scooters without having that anxiety of hopping on a scooter and then immediately having to go into the road to try it out for the first time. This, we found, is a great way for some of those folks that are on the fence, they love the idea, just never really felt safe enough or confident enough to hop on a scooter after trying it out here in one of our events. They're excited and confident to hop on and then use Lime. And as I mentioned earlier, on our scooters, all along the stem are going to be, aside from contact info, a couple of rules and things you should obey that are generally the same across all markets, like no sidewalk riding and other things you might want to know. And currently, we're enforcing 18 and plus only. Tulsa has a rule where it's 16 and up. As long as they have a driver's license, then they can legally drive, they can rent a scooter. We ultimately leave that up to the city, but our stance is 18 plus. And these scooters go 15 miles an hour. They can be capped at 18, 18 is the fastest that they can physically go. 15 has just sort of been the standard across all of our markets in Oklahoma where we've left them. Bartlesville, however, is at 18 miles an hour. And these scooters on a full charge can go roughly 20 miles. Of course, you factor in hills and road conditions and the person's weight, they may go less. But much like most things that are battery-powered, colder weather, the batteries drain quicker. Not that this really applies to any rider's knowledge, but they do drain quicker, so they potentially go less or last, less. And in general, the thought process is to, over time, sort of create the understanding with the community that scooters are going to be available consistently at these places. And I say "these places" meaning potentially Bob's Coffee Shop or at the bus station or other places where, over time, we've noticed people have actually been opening up the app to look for Lime. And by looking at all of that data, we might decide that, oh, this random spot five blocks outside of the city is actually a place where folks, on a daily basis, are opening up the Lime app, so we should put scooters there and then allow for them to get back and forth from point A to point B. Oh, and lastly, all of the, well, at least not all of the trackable data, but a majority of the trackable data will be available to the city through a dashboard that we will share. And simply put, it'll give you details like average trip times, how many trips a day, how many rides a scooter gets on average per day. And then below, here at the bottom, you'll see a heat map that, on a daily basis, refreshes, but will show you, based on the darker the red path is, where folks are actually riding all around town. This could be put to use to decide a variety of things, whether it's where to put bike lanes or just where to pay attention to. In the past, potentially, very, not very traveled roads will become far more traveled, just because of potentially the road conditions or whatever it might be. And this will be shared with you so that you can keep track of how we're doing and what we're doing. Were there any initial questions?
How are, how are they being charged? I mean, I know you went through the juice charge thing.
So, ultimately, we could charge the scooters ourselves and bring them up and switch them out, which a small percentage of those scooters here will be the case. But a majority of the scooters will be charged by local residents. Again, who we call juicers, they're independent contractors. And for example, in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, there's folks that will pick up, you know, one or two scooters a week, just something random on the way home, make a few bucks for groceries. And then you've got guys with their F-150 in a trailer who are picking up 75 scooters in a pop. And, you know, each scooter for charging your, it changes, but roughly around three bucks per charge. So, you can kind of do the math and understand the motivation of some folks who've almost turned this into a full-time job.
So, the app that this is running on, that's something that they, that a person can get once they get to the, to the vehicle, to the...
You could download it right now and never open it up, let's say, and then tomorrow decide to open it up. And upon doing so, it'll show you all the scooters that are available in the area. Similar to...
Or any area for that.
Or any area. You could scroll over to Oklahoma City and see that there's a bunch of scooters in Bricktown and so on. And, and similar to how, if you're a rider that downloaded this app here, of course, any city you go to, it's the same app you can ride. And similarly, you know, juicers, the folks who work in Guthrie for picking up Lime scooters, if for some reason they're in Edmond or Oklahoma City over the weekend hanging out with family, they could also juice there and charge scooters and, you know, work that way as well.
So, does this app have the capability, let's just say, I want to get from, I'm new to town, but I want to get to point A to point B. Does it give directions on how to do that?
It will give you directions in terms of how to rent a scooter. We have put a lot of thought into, like an Uber or a Google Maps, give them the path that potentially is the safest for a scooter. Avoid this street because it's a fast street. But the reality is, at least for now, you can't really look at your phone while riding a scooter with both hands. So, that's sort of something that's been shelved. But with newer generations of scooters, this one has an LCD screen on it that'll tell you the speed and the battery charge. But the next generation, which, let's say, comes end of this year, next year, will have an actual LCD screen that can, with a higher pixel rate, I'm not sure what the right terminology is, but show a much more higher-resolution image. Therefore, we can put messaging there. "Hey, you've entered this area you shouldn't enter," or "Hey, take a left on Johnson Street," you know, something that they can read while their hands are safely holding the scooter and navigate a city that way. Alternatively, we've also looked into potentially folks that are going, you know, wear headsets. Not that we've, it's kind of a touchy subject, right? Do you have headsets in while you're riding a bike? Probably not safe. But we thought of that as well, where maybe through headsets, you're getting directions, turn left, turn right. But ultimately, for now, we're still in infancy of directional...
So, what, do you rent by the hour? Is that what the theory is?
By the minute. So, you, it's a dollar to unlock and 32 cents a minute. And the idea is that you could probably, so one of the reasons why Uber invested in Lime was because they were noticing in the markets where we were that they had their service, they were losing the short trips to, whether it was Lime or Bird or whatever scooter company was there, because most folks would rather ride the five-block or the 10-block trip on a scooter, get there quicker, not have to wait, instantly hop on a scooter and go, for a fraction of the cost, you know, a couple of dollars at most. Whereas in Uber, by the time you get in the Uber, you're not being charged for that, but you've waited 10, 15 minutes. Next thing you know, it's a $7, $8, $10 trip, just to go down a couple of blocks.
How do these things handle on Brick Street?
Good question. Our original model didn't handle very well. Bricktown was a very, I mean, they handle fine, it's a much bumpier ride. But the moment you hit that one section where two bricks are missing, not a good thing. So, one thing we did was make the tires larger on our, on this current version. And the next version that will be coming will have even larger tires. Because after we kind of got through the Bricktown problem, bigger tires, handles better, it's got shocks, smoother ride, the trolley started operating. And the problem then was that the tires, although are wider, are skinny enough that if you hit the tracks dead-on, you could get wedged in there. So, there was that whole issue. But Bricktown has, has been fine. St. Louis has some similar roads like that, one of my other markets. But in general, with all of these learnings, we're making our own scooters. Other competitors are buying off-the-shelf scooters and then modifying them. So, we're at least able to, with the next version, address hopefully all the issues we're seeing. And then, of course, the next version, you'll notice other things need to be fixed.
My next question's on safety. Are part of the streets, you got restricted view down here in this, this part of town, and it's really hard to see. Is there something like a flag or something on these things that sticks up so people know you're coming or...
No, no flags, although that's potentially a great idea, one of those, like in the old bicycles, the like wire and all reflect. No, no flags. However, in terms of at nighttime or when it is darker, there are lights on them.
There are lights?
Brake lights and a front light, front-facing light.
Now, are they on all the time?
The, the front lights are on all the time and then upon hitting the brakes. And actually, now that I say it, the, the normal, the brake light is, like a car, is on, and then you hit the brake, it gets brighter. During the daytime, probably not noticing it much, although you could definitely see the front light. But there are no, aside from...
The only downside I see is the safety factor down there.
And, you know, I'm not going to try to sugarcoat it. The reality is, you know, some, some folks, I mean, you're balancing yourself on a scooter. And, you know, just like riding a bike, at least a bike, you've got a seat. But just like in riding a bike, if you're not paying attention, you might hit a stick or some garbage in the road that can potentially cause you to get into an accident or, you know, have to jump off the scooter. I do understand the concerns when it comes to the newness of this, along with the fact that this is a new thing that drivers will have to look out for.
Really cool idea.
Yeah.
I'm not knocking the idea at all.
No, no, and I...
I'm just kind of concerned about the safety.
There, there is a learning curve and, and, you know, with the potential, and I don't want to make it sound like there's all sorts of accidents that happen all the time. I'm sure there are accidents that happen where somebody scuffs themselves up, but it's not being reported. But there is a learning curve, similar to how with every market I launch, there are going to be those folks who've never ridden scooters before that, you know, either do really well or potentially struggle, just like they might when they step on a skateboard for the first time. I remember I, I let my dad wear my rollerblades in the 90s, and the first thing he did when he stepped on them was slip and break his wrist, which, you know, made me feel really bad. That does happen, you know, there will be accidents. But being that there is a learning curve and the fact that hopefully, most folks who would be inclined to ride a scooter may have already tried them in Tulsa, Oklahoma City, and other markets. I, I feel that with every market we launch in Oklahoma, that learning curve is shorter, just because it's not this brand-new thing it was three years ago. And on top of that, similarly, every market we launch, whether it's fraternity guys or a homeless guy throws it in the river or in a tree or sets them on fire, we do lose scooters as well. And I've baked that into my pro forma and anticipate, you know, scooters disappearing from Guthrie. But that too disappears or dissipates after a time, once this becomes the norm, you know, within the first couple of months. Some folks are going to be so angry at Limes being here that they might get caught knocking them over and then trying to blame us for the clutter. And this has been things that we've run into in other cities. But it all dies down. It becomes no different than a bus stop or another public service, if you will.
How many are you going to have locally? Are you going to bring like 20, 30?
I would like to have a cap of 100. A minimum of 50. The reality is, right now, it's slow. With COVID and the restrictions that every city has, who knows what this summer will be like? One thing we do know, though, is that once the weather gets better, people come out in droves. We had actually a record year last year despite COVID, because what are people allowed to do, other than stay at home? They can't go to the bowling alley, the movies, the restaurants, especially in early days. The one thing they could do is go out on a scooter, open air, and ride around town, which was actually the perfect time, because there were no cars around. I kind of like lost track of why I even brought that up. Oh, right. So, 50 scooters, but the idea is, once summer hits, you know, if, if all we have is 50, we might realize, ooh, we should have asked for more, because the demand might jump. But the reality is, no more than 100. If it turns out there's a street festival or some huge event where we need to bring in more, we can always bring in more.
That'll be enough.
To accommodate for...
Now, another question. Are you all going to be liable for this? Like if somebody falls off or whatever, are you all, because I didn't know if the city's going to...
Absolutely. I'm, I'm pretty sure that we probably wouldn't be here today if, if, you know, we didn't figure out, you know, put the thing, the right things in place to make sure that the city isn't responsible or liable. Effectively, when a person signs up for the app, they're, they're, they're signing away, you know, their ability to come after us with pity, if you will. The only situation where we would be liable is the accident occurred because of a malfunction of our software, the scooter broke, or a tire fell off or something like that, where it was a defect of our product.
Sounds good.
What, when you, what, what kind of market, market analysis do you do when you decide you're coming, you're coming? What did you do when you decided you're coming to Guthrie?
That has changed a lot. Originally, it was, as you would imagine, okay, we're going to Oklahoma, we're the biggest cities. We've got a limited amount of scooters and a certain amount of runway. So, we did the Oklahoma Cities, the Tulsas. Now that I've established those, this was supposed to happen last year, this time last year. My goal was to, from these hubs, now expand out. It didn't make sense to open up a warehouse in, say, Edmond, when there's one in Oklahoma City. Didn't make sense to open up a warehouse in Norman. But the moment Oklahoma City was established, I was able to expand out. So, this year, with the one-year pause of last year, I started looking around, well, what are my markets today? I go, I go as far north as Edmond. What could I support with that Edmond crew? And as far as, you know, the Enids and the Shawnees and the Lawtons, because of the way my markets are situated, I chose specific cities. And also, by way of getting into Guthrie, we are expanding into Kansas City. So, Wichita will be supported by Oklahoma City until Wichita is able to run on its own and then support its surrounding cities. So, I kind of had this attack plan of St. Louis going west towards Kansas and Oklahoma City going north towards Kansas to help support our efforts of launching Kansas this year as well.
So, it's just purely geographical?
I think so. I mean, there are cities that have reached out to us that we couldn't, just because they're two, three hours away. We'd love to, and we could send scooters there, but then that would mean I'm sending somebody up there a couple of times a week and an eight, 10-hour day. They're only going to be able to be on the ground for a couple of hours, so it wouldn't make sense. Enid being an example. They, you know, we've been talking to them, but until I can potentially find another city halfway there, it may be something I have to hold off. Whereas Guthrie makes a lot of sense, since we're heading up this way all the time anyways.
So, does your, your analysis deal at all with age groups in a geographic area?
Not, not, not that deep. Ultimately, a lot of my decision-making is based on what can I support without it being a huge drag on my ability to fund it or to finance it. So, yes, you know, a year or two ago...
You're kind of trial and error too.
We are trial and error. The beauty is, I'm not investing, I'm not spending money on, let's say, a warehouse or more vans like I had to when I originally came to Oklahoma. With what I have, with the extra scooters I have in inventory, with the distance and how close it is to Edmond and Oklahoma City, all those factored in more so than potentially what the potential was, we're at a point where we've captured the Oklahoma Cities of Oklahoma, the bigger cities, right? Now, it's a matter of getting these scooters out everywhere. Even if, you know, Guthrie isn't our biggest hit, it doesn't matter. It's still able to, I'm still able to stay profitable in Guthrie so long as I have 75 scooters. And even if it means come winter, we're getting no rides for three months, a lot of that is subsidized or made up for in the summertime to allow our scooters to be out there. We would rather not pull our scooters from, like, let's say Guthrie, even if it's dead, because you break that cycle of people being able to rely. You know, granted, the bus may not run when it's completely snowed and iced over, but you know that on any crappy rainy day or cold day, that bus is running, so you can get to where you need to go, and Lime is the same way. We understand that come winter, our business plummets, but our scooters still stay out unless it's a snowstorm that we pull them in.
Well, that was going to be my next question. So, the scooters, let's say there's 100 of them. They're just going to be scattered everywhere, right? Pretty much.
Scattered is...
I'm talking, winter is another issue. What, do you guys come and congregate them? Or do they just stay wherever they were...
Partially, yes. I mean, the, those places that they were dropped will migrate or change throughout the year. In a place like Guthrie, you might find that the core of downtown is clearly the place where everybody is. Therefore, the scooters pretty much will stay here. But the reality is, come wintertime, for some odd reason, we might find that another part of town is, is busier. Example, Oklahoma City, obviously Bricktown, Midtown are busiest places first two years. COVID hit, nobody's going downtown to Harkins Theater or to the restaurants down there. So, all of a sudden, although we had all of our scooters for the first year in having downtown, this last year, all of my scooters have been pretty much on the border of downtown where everybody lives. So, depending on weather, depending on situations that are happening, a new bar that opens up or a restaurant that opens up another side of town, could change things, but come winter, more than likely, they'll be pulled into the core of downtown where a majority of the rides are. And if it turns out they're not getting many rides and if the city feels like it looks like too much clutter, we can always pull back some of those scooters and then bring them back in the spring. And with this, we have an MOU that I believe I shared, but if not, I can share it. And the MOU is just a template that would be for a pilot program that we would love to discuss further. And the pilot program would allow for the city to, assuming that this were to start in the next couple of months, experience Lime during its peak season to really understand what a fully fleshed-out Lime program could look like with the riders riding every day versus us doing this, say, come fall, when business drops and you feel like everything's great, because scooters aren't getting ridden, but the reality is, you, you want to see it at its peak and see not only how much fun people can have, but how useful these can be for folks that are just trying to get to their job every day.
So, when people sign up on the app, they put up a credit card?
Or Apple Pay or, yeah, Google Pay.
Or Google Pay, something. Because that's going to unlock it at a buck and basically $19 an hour is what it is. So, at the end of the day, what if they break it? That's on you?
It's on me. I mean, granted, if...
The end user has no liability on...
Correct. Unless, I mean, even if you sent me a video where the guy is dousing it and gasoline lighting it on fire, I'll probably ban him. But it's not like we're going to go after the guy for the $800 or, you know, what it comes out to. Yes, we'll definitely take measures to prevent, because we do have bad actors, people that are trying to scrap our scooters for aluminum. They're like 80% aluminum, so, and the copper wiring. So, you can imagine, if they can find a place to sell that, it's worth, you know, whatever aluminum's worth these days. And a lot of times, we see that, but we're not, I have yet, and I've been with Lime for three years, I have yet to see us go after somebody. Unless it was literally like a chop shop that has 20 of our scooters, which has happened. But if it's one guy who broke a scooter or it was lost under his name, that's kind of baked into my, my P and L.
See, one of the concerns I have, and I don't know if anybody else on this council's thought of it, we passed an ordinance last year that allows UTVs around town, golf carts, UTVs, that type of stuff. How is that going to play in, especially with the foot traffic that we have? Just, I guess that's more of a Leroy question.
Well, remember, it won't affect sidewalks, because these don't get on the sidewalks.
No, I know, they're on the road, but the UTVs and the golf carts don't get on the sidewalks either.
No, but you said foot traffic is what I'm saying.
Well, the foot traffic walking across streets and this thing.
But, but yeah, they will be competing for road surface with vehicles, golf carts.
And I'm not sure how ATVs are, but our, our scooters, at least, this of course falls on how you decide to allow them, but they, they should be treated similar to bikes, you know. If there are cars going down the road right on the side, I mean, these aren't things that are necessarily written in any ordinance, but that's the way they should be treated, you know. People should... You know, people should understand that if there is space, you can go down the side, but you're not weaving it into the cars, nor should you on a motorcycle or on a bike. And I'm not sure how the ATVs are.
Yeah, I don't know either. I was just throwing it out there as a thought. I don't know.
I, I do feel like, you know, with ATVs and golf carts being smaller vehicles out there, I'm not sure how long they've been allowed, but at least that's a good thing for us in the sense that it's, it's already started getting drivers thinking about the fact that there are other vehicles that being smaller, they may not see until the last minute to kind of address your concern. You know, you, you, you want to make sure you're looking out for people in general, but the last thing you expect is potentially a scooter, like a bike coming down your side. And these days, most people aren't biking, at least not in most cities. So you're not seeing that, but.
Does scooter have a horn?
Scooter has a bell. So you can ring it if you like, but no, no actual electronic horn. We used to have, so we do have the ability.
Even you were smiling on that one.
My mask is hiding that, so. No, we used to have the ability for the scooters to actually speak to people. Now they just beep and make annoying sounds if you're trying to steal it or if you have it in your house, Mayor, and I come to your house and you don't give it back to me, I can ring the crap out of it so that it annoys you in the middle of the night and you throw it on the street. But it used to have the ability to say things and it creeped people out so much that we, I kind of, not a class action, but some, somehow people rose up and our, our, our legal team basically had to stop, put a stop to it. Because it would say things like, if you were to try to take the scooter without renting it, it would say, please, you know, return, please, please don't steal me, something, 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 I'm calling the police. And that wasn't okay with LA and we had to stop that. But we do have that capability. Oh, one last thing before, you know, I kind of wrap up my portion. With the MOU, we would like to offer five cents per trip. This is something that we do in other cities with the regular ordinance, but never have we done it in the MOU. Barlesville actually recently agreed last December and that's the first pilot program, if you will, where it's five cents per trip. Now, I understand, you know, it doesn't add up to much, but it does add up over time. And with hopefully this summer and more ridership, it'll be something that'll be at least a pretty penny. And on top of that, in terms of the riders, we do have a program called Lime Hero. And imagine you ride downtown and your, your trip is $7.75, let's say. You can round that up to the nearest dollar and then that portion goes towards a local charity that, you know, the city could recommend or we could just choose or deal with on that. So ultimately, you know, we could launch at any time, within a week, let's say. And we're comfortable with the concept of, you know, making sure that when and if we do get approval, it's obviously, or not even when we get approval, but this MOU fits and is comfortable with the city. We don't want to force ourselves in here if, if the city's not ready yet. And of course he wouldn't let us in here, but I'd like to make sure that we've got everything figured out. And yeah, that's kind of where I'm at.
See, when they're not in use, again, the city can identify where, where they can be put, quote, in storage or?
No, they're dropped where they are.
They're dropped.
They, they, so by default, we put them where we believe they would make the most business sense with the caveat that we're not blocking, you know, ADA ramps and pedestrian walkways and putting them in front of where they shouldn't be. And that's governed by initially us doing our due diligence, but any location that the city says, hey, this is a no-go area, we obviously won't put scooters there. And over time, as we start hearing from local businesses saying they don't want scooters on their corner, of course, we then make sure that they don't reappear there.
So if I'm riding the scooter and I go to Rick's Coffee, getting coffee, and I set it against the wall and then I'm done with it and I leave it there, who moves it?
Either another customer who rents it or later in the day, it'll get picked up by a juicer if the battery is in need of charging.
Potentially.
Well, let's say if it's only one ride, it's 80% battery, you park it in front of Bob's Coffee Shop and it could sit there all day.
Or in a parking spot in front of Bob's Coffee.
And if that were the case, and, and you know, this would require us being notified of that, but we could definitely fine riders for bad behavior in terms of leaving them in the street or in a parking spot or, you know, on somebody's private property or just in any way to enforce.
Okay. Leave or not?
If I understand how it works correctly.
You can have no ride areas where you can't go into, like a park. If you didn't want them in there, then it would shut down within five or 10 seconds once they go in that park. But you can also have, like you ride down Oklahoma, but say you can't park in that block, you have to go to the end of the block.
Right.
So like if you don't want 15 scooters right in front of the coffee shop, you could make that block of Oklahoma a no parking zone and they'd have to go to the end of block and congregate somewhere at the end of the block rather than in the front of the business. So you can designate no parking areas.
Exactly. Similar to the Arch District in Tulsa and even the Gathering Place, as you can imagine, they don't want scooters flying through there, but people love riding up and down the Riverwalk or the pathway there. So we have the entire Gathering Place as a no-go zone. They basically can't enter and if they try to innocently within 10, 25 feet or 10 to 15 seconds, it'll slow, it'll just shut the power off, if you will, and they'll have to lock it back out to lock it. Or they can keep, in theory, chart, getting charged for it, but most people will. So that's kind of how we can address those issues. Rather than potentially just blocking off all of Oklahoma, let's say, there might be certain areas of interest where you want us to write off the bat, block off this park, this cemetery, this parking lot, or this swath of road. Because a couple of the cities I'm talking to, they have 66, we're running right through. And they don't want folks riding up and down 66, but they don't mind them crossing the street. So we've zoned it off so that you can't really ride up and down 66, nor would you want it. But obvious, for obvious reasons, you can cross that highway slash road strip. And we can do things like that. Now, the technology isn't perfect. It is GPS, as you may have experienced with your cell phone, if you're in the middle of a desert or you're standing in downtown area, cell reception can be kind of off. And since GPS is based on that, we say the 10 to 25 feet because some spots, it'll catch you right away. Some spots, it might take that additional length for the scooter to ping to the server a few times before it can finally recognize that it's actually entered this zone, so shut it down and so on. But ultimately it works.
And because you're, you're basically tracking these people through their credit cards there, right? Let's see the, see the app?
Corporate is, sure.
So you know who leaves that?
Oh, yes.
In the wrong spot?
Aside from the credit card aspect, absolutely. The phone is tied to, you know, the rented scooter and upon registering for an account, we have the information you provided us with. So yes, I personally, not at least initially have access, nor could I provide Bob Johnson, this, that, the other, but I could definitely, at least on my end, know who is riding so that if any action needs to be taken, we can.
So this agreement looks to be with UCO at one point.
Two or three samples. This is the, the example that you.
Oh, right, right. Those are the examples that I shared. I did share a blank template as well.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. Do we, does city manager go with you and negotiate where?
The UCO example is probably my mistake for sharing it. I did share, I was supposed to share a couple of other city agreements that we had. In that case, that's us approaching UCO after already being approved in Oklahoma City, just so that there's an official agreement between us dictating where and where you can't ride and park scooters on the campus.
But that's what I'm saying. Do we, is that what we do get with them and determine where they can and can't?
Well, first, first, we wanted to see if city council was supportive of the concept. And then if, if that's the case, then there's some details we would have to work out. One of them is of course, there's more than one scooter business in the, out there, there's probably at least three. Do you want to hear presentations from any of the other vendors? If not, we'll have to determine are we going to go through, what kind of selection process? Because it's probably only going to be one vendor. There's not enough traffic to have multiple vendors in, in Guthrie. So somehow we, we'll have to select which one we're going to do the trial with. And then staff would work with whatever vendor and come up with a modified memorandum of understanding with that. And there we would have some maps and talk about no ride areas, no parking areas and kind of how we're going to set it up. And again, our, our thoughts are that this would be like a, a three month trial period with a, an extension of three more months if, if things went well. So it would be up to a six month trial period, hopefully during the busiest season. And then once that's over, then we could decide whether we want to go to a more permanent basis or not.
100%. Yep.
Well, I checked you and your competitor.
I'm sorry?
I checked.
Okay.
You and your competitor. And the online census is, it's like this. You're, I mean, as far as looking at other vendors, I did some looking into it. With the other one, as far as you guys, if you want to hear another one, that's fine, but the overall consensus is, you know, six of this, half a dozen of that, that them and their other competitor are kind of the same, so.
The, the, the ridership may be one of the things that concerned us. We talked to Bird, one of the others.
Yeah, that's the one I was talking about.
They have no Oklahoma presence. Everything's managed from out of state. And that's one of the things that give us concern with this group. They're based in Oklahoma City and so if there's issues, they're closed. They have no in-state presence with Bird. It's all managed from other locations.
Did he bring any of those green shoes?
I was going to say, did they supply those?
These, I actually, believe it or not, got them for 20 bucks on Amazon.
Oh, boy.
They're not comfortable at all, so I only wear them to my meetings. Yeah, I was just looking up Lime green things.
In the right color.
Well, so did, did we contact him and ask him to come talk to us or did he contact us or us to come talk to us?
We were contacted by two vendors, this one and Bird. And we chose for him to make the first presentation. We have Bird scheduled for our next meeting at 6:00 for another workshop, if you want to hear from them. And the reason we did this one first was because they do have an Oklahoma presence. We were, thought that he was probably the most informative when we had our Zoom meeting with him a couple of weeks ago. And so we thought this would be the one to start with. Be glad to bring, the other one's ready to, but they're not here, so it will be by Zoom.
I'd tell Bird to take a flight.
Yeah, that's what I was getting ready to say because we don't want anybody not local, at least in the state.
Yeah.
We find where he stays.
Don't waste our time or your time or anybody else's time. They're here, they're.
I agree.
I wouldn't, I'd tell Bird to go.
Jump up and down, great.
So what, what were, what ultimately were the, the decision, if you will, is to say yea or nay to the concept, to direct staff to continue to explore a, a trial period with a, with a particular vendor for this product?
If, if we get the green light tonight from city council, then we would go through a selection process. Right now, we're probably leaning towards this company.
Sounds like a lime light.
Yeah. And we're going to give the other one to Bird.
And you said you were giving the city 10% per rider? Is that what I heard?
We'll start at five, but no, it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's five cents per trip.
Five percent?
No, he said five cents.
Five cents per trip.
But, but then what we will do is we will, staff will come back once we work out the details and make another presentation to the council. Here's the memorandum of, of agreement. Here's how it will work. These areas that we would prohibit riding, these areas where you could ride but not park. Here's the areas that we, lack of a better term, a crowd area where you could park like at the end of the street, but maybe not in the middle of the street. So we'd work those details out, come back with some kind of map to show you how it would flow in our town. Here's the MOU for you all to act on.
I have one question for you. The new sidewalk going into Walmart, I'm just, is, we don't ride these things on the sidewalk, but that is obviously the better place to ride them than in the middle of the vision?
One thing that.
But we can limit the state highway.
Can we designate that as a rider sidewalk? So that people, because there's going to be people on wheelchairs, there's going to be people in that kind of stuff that's already on that sidewalk.
It's a pretty narrow sidewalk, so we'll have to give some consideration. We kind of like golf carts. We don't want them on highways. We, we would allow them to cross highways, just like golf carts, but we don't want them driving up and down where high speed.
I'm just seeing that as a major issue going to Walmart.
So we'll have to do some more thought process on that.
But I don't think these are transportation to and from Walmart.
And these are, these are the sort of things that.
Yeah.
The first month, we're going to know, or the first week, we're going to know that's an issue or it isn't. And if it is, we can easily zone that off. Another situation you might run into like in Oklahoma City, and I, I just, because I live there, Klassen, for example, it's like 40 miles an hour, three lanes. Mornings and after rush hour, you know, it's totally comfortable to ride and people do ride it, but the reality is, you know, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, 10:00 AM, you're not riding because it's too fast. So what people end up doing is they end up hopping on the sidewalks that run all along Klassen. And unlike, you know, Bricktown on a normal day where it's packed, there's nobody using these sidewalks. So the local police don't really bother anybody for hopping on the sidewalk and riding down the sidewalk, let's say on Klassen, whereas in Bricktown, on a busy Saturday, they might say something if there was a jerk riding, you know, through a sidewalk crowd. So these things, depending on Guthrie and how the, the local, you know, public takes them, we can adjust accordingly. If it turns out that Walmart area is great, we'll leave it be. If it turns out we should probably block it off because, you know, folks are taking up too much space from riding by and the wheelchairs can't get through, then we can always zone that off entirely.
It might be interesting to see them carry the groceries.
I was just thinking about other baskets on these, though.
I'm not that coordinated to carry a couple sacks of groceries and ride one of these at the same time.
I have seen in Oklahoma City, a guy not riding the scooter, but he rented it and he was effectively using it like a dolly to push a bunch of cases of beer down the road. You can technically bring groceries with you, but probably riding at the same time you want to back.
People get creative.
We've seen people move furniture with our scooters, couches and whatnot.
Council have any other questions?
I'm just curious, what, what would make, what makes you think that it's going to be very successful in Guthrie? And it's a curiosity.
What makes me think they would be successful? I think the last seven cities that we launched in Oklahoma, aside from Oklahoma City, which we came in not knowing was going to happen, I was very surprised to find people of all ages and all backgrounds and interests actually riding these scooters. There is a learning curve. You know, it does take a while for adoption to happen, but based on what I've seen in Jenks, even in Edmund, Little Rock is a little bit bigger, but North Little Rock, you know, these, yes, there are always going to be those folks who don't hop on because, you know, they, they know themselves and maybe they know not, they don't have good balance or what have you, but they're very useful. I mean, how often do we hop into our car just to go four blocks down the street to a, a 7-Eleven or grocery shopping when potentially all I needed was a scooter and a backpack? Or seeing a city from a scooter is actually a completely different thing than walking the city or driving in your car. And we're finding that the joy riding alone, it's, you know, it used to be movies, go to the bars, restaurant, maybe go to bowling or something in Oklahoma City. Now, pretty much everybody's incorporated using scooters as a part of their nightlife, Now, pretty much everybody's incorporated using scooters as a part of their nightlife, their work life, whatever it is. Somebody mentioned that their sister-in-law or somebody, uh, rides scooters and, and racked up sixty miles in the last, I don't know, year or so.
She runs her hair and it's on her lunch hour.
There you go, okay, so, so, yeah, I mean, this is something that, you know, people will start to find use cases. Some people will ride them for joy and for fun, some people are actually using them for practical needs.
So grab a camera and a backpack and go.
Yeah.
Do you have a drinking policy or alcohol, is alcohol prohibited on these things?
Correct, no different than if you're operating a bike or a vehicle.
See how many we see stacked up in front of the bar, right?
Well, you know, yeah.
So, so what staff would need. So what staff will need tonight, if you want us to move forward, is for you all to make a motion for us to, um, select a vendor to work with and bring back a operating plan and a memorandum of understanding for you all to consider at a future meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I think he asked us to choose a vendor, so we, so we want to be specific that we're using lime.
Well, I, I said that we would, staff would recommend one, but either way works, but it's probably be the same result, but.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval, then to move forward with the scooter concept and staff directed to fill in the blanks.
We, that work.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. With that, ladies and gentlemen, our workshop is adjourned and city council or, our public works will start in about ten minutes, seven o'clock. Sure.
We do have a lot of stuff, uh, but it's good stuff. And it's stuff that represents athletes and teams for the history of Oklahoma.
There's definitely a lot of good stuff at the Oklahoma Territorial Capital Sports Museum. It's Guthrie's one-stop shop to see Oklahoma sports history.
We have over sixty, sixty-five baseball jerseys, plus all the football jerseys. Probably have around a hundred and twenty jerseys of athletes, uh, of all different sports.
The museum was established in nineteen ninety-six when Richard got together with his buddies, baseball legend Ferguson Jenkins, and Harlem Globetrotter great, Geese Osby. Since then, the museum's grown its collection every year, and they're always looking for more.
Pictures, jerseys, gloves, um, whatever that people have, that they want to represent their family or, or themselves here as an athlete.
The museum has all the famous names you've heard, and some you probably haven't.
Uh, one that a lot of people don't know about is Earlene Beans Riesinger. And, uh, Beans Riesinger was the only lady from Oklahoma to play any length of time in the league of their own in the nineteen forties and nineteen fifties, the American Women's Baseball League. And so she was from down by Altus at Hess, Oklahoma, and so we have a nice display here.
You may not have heard of the Hominy Indians.
A lot of people don't know about them. They were a professional football team from Hominy, Oklahoma, that played in a league that was made up of teams from northeastern Oklahoma, Missouri, Kansas, Arkansas. Uh, one year they went undefeated, and an oil man from Hominy, uh, put together a game between the national champion NFL, New York Giants, and the Hominy Indians, and it was played in Hominy, and the Hominy Indians won it.
Yeah, those New York Giants. Try finding that story online. The Oklahoma Territorial Capital Sports Museum consists of not one, not two, but three historic buildings right here in downtown Guthrie. You could spend hours here just counting the jerseys on the wall. Check this out, and this is just the football room. Let's check out the baseball room. Sometimes, a call from an old friend can lead to a historic find, like these baseballs.
He said, "Richard, I have a collection of baseballs that was given to, to Seminole State College, and they're just set, setting down the storage room. And if you would like them, uh, to put on display, they have some really good autographs on them, because they came from the nineteen thirties, forties, fifties, and sixties of Major League Baseball. We have school groups, FCA groups, we have, um, YMCA groups that come in. And we try to emphasize to young people that come in that all of us can't be professional athletes, but all of us can be successful with the ability God's given us."
In Guthrie, discovering Oklahoma sports greatness, I'm Darren Brown.
Smith's Two-Story Privy at one oh six West Oklahoma Avenue. Winfield S. Smith, Guthrie City Councilman and builder of many early commercial buildings, granted by deed on July twenty-eighth, eighteen eighty-nine, to Nathaniel McKay, the right to build a two-story, eight-by-ten-feet brick privy on his property, Lot twenty-three, with right of access to occupants of that lot, as well as those of Lots twenty-four and twenty-five. McKay, a transplanted Easterner who became a Guthrie developer, was charged with keeping the privy maintained and in good repair when he purchased the lot and its, quote, "triumph" building. Tenants of the building were assured of two seats on each floor of the privy. While no photograph of the privy exists, the artist's sketch indicates the type of structure and the covered walk assuring access from the second floor of the building. Smith's Two-Story Privy.
The agendas that we have, okay? All right.
Go.
Ladies and gentlemen, stand. You join Councilman Balthoroid with the pledge to our nation in flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Should pray with me. Father God, I thank you so much for, Lord, the love and blessing that you have for, for us here in this room, as well as those in our town, God. Well, I thank you especially for the incredible amount of hard work that our city workers have put in over the last several weeks, as we've had just an incredible amount of work to be done. And God, I just pray a, a special blessing, Father, over, over every employee of the city of Guthrie, those in this room, those that represent the rest of the employees that are in this room, God. We just, I pray a specific blessing as well over the leadership, God, in this room tonight, that you have appointed these council members and our mayor and city manager and all the others, God, to, to guide and direct and to make decisions. And Father, we just pray that you would continue to give the wisdom that you so abundantly give, in Jesus Christ's name, that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Story. Call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting, uh, of, uh, March second. Second item on that agenda is public comments, community announcements, and recognitions. Do we have any community announcements or recognitions? Uh, hearing none. Third item on the agenda is a consent agenda, item A, uh, which is the, um, approval of Public Works Authority Meeting of February second. We'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval, then, of the consent agenda, item A. Uh, item number four, a discussion, possible action to approve amendment number one to task order, uh, number one thirty-nine for the Guthrie Lake Spillway Rehab with Myers Engineering. Um, Leroy, are you taking that, or?
Uh, Tenny's gonna present these three items, four, five, and six. And we, it probably would make better coordination and sense if we did the presentation on all three, because they're interrelated, and then come back and make a motion to approve them, um, one at a time after we get done. But I think it will work better if we present all three of them, because they, they're all interrelated.
Very good.
Okay, um, the task order, amendment number one, task order one thirty-nine, is services provided. And, uh, the amendment for the Guthrie Lake Spillway rehabilitation will be for compensation for the services under the Phase Three Design Engineering portion. Uh, it's increasing the original agreement amount by a hundred and five thousand to pay the engineer for design and submittal to OWRB by April thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Um, the original task order, one thirty-nine, was for, uh, thirty-two thousand. Amendment number one was, is for a hundred and five thousand, bringing the adjusted total to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. This is a sixty-five, uh, thirty-five match grant, uh, being OWRB sixty-five percent and the local match of thirty-five percent. Um, to date, we've paid right at thirty-two thousand from the original task order, leaving the remaining balance after all is said and done and, uh, we've received the grant. Our balance would be fifteen thousand nine fifty is what we would have left. Um, the first task order covered, if you're, it was for the H and H study and the actual application, uh, for the grant. And this portion will now finish up the design of the grant. We'll move on to, I guess, if you'd like me to move on to the.
Just a quick question, so why was there such a difference between the original thirty-two thousand and a hundred, a hundred and five? What, what changed that?
If I could answer that, um, OWRB came to us and they had grant funds. And, and the first step is the design, plans in hand, okay? The first part of the engineering fees, the thirty-two thousand, uh, was to get us to the application point and figure out what it was gonna take to do the design in hand. Because to do the design, they had to do some preliminary study on what was needed to fix the spillway. And so that's what the first thirty-two, now the amendment to the task order will get us to the point that we will have plans in the hand, so that if we decide to do the improvements, we have the plans ready to put the project out for bids.
And then we'll have another engineering study at that point, correct?
Uh, we won't have, we'll be done with engineering at that point, uh, as far as Phase One. Now, if we, if we do the actual implementation, which is a substantial project, we don't have funding for that right now, and they don't have the money to match, provide the grant either at this point. So we will have plans in the hand where they are paying, uh, is it thirty-five percent?
Thirty-five percent.
Uh, of it. Um, it, at some point, we're gonna have to fix it, so we will have those plans. At a later date, when they get the funding, we can either apply for the grant to do the work, or we can delay it at our choice. But at that time, we'll have to identify about five hundred thousand dollars of local money to do the actual construction, if we want to do it. So the first thing, if you look at, uh, uh, the cover letter for item five, if you see there Myers Engineering, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand in the, uh, well, that includes the thirty-five and a hundred and five you're adding by item four. And then, uh, this, item number five is approving the grant application to get thirty-five percent to pay for this Phase One, plans in hand. And then, uh, item number seven, uh, to do the plans in hand, we have to have geotechnical work, and that seventeen thousand seven hundred is what, uh, uh, is the geotac. So that's item number six. And so in total, it's a hundred fifty-four thousand. OWR pays sixty-five percent, I said thirty-five, really, sixty-five percent. So they pay a hundred thousand five fifty-five of the one fifty-four. Our share is fifty-four thousand one forty-five. We've already paid the thirty-two. So going forward, we would have twenty-two thousand more in this to get the plans in hand. Then we'll hold up, if, when they get the funds for the big project, the actual construction, then we'll have to make a decision, do we have funding to implement that? Or do we want to put the actual construction off to a later date? But we will have the plans when we get ready to do it.
And we don't even have a thumbnail of that yet.
No, we don't, we, we, we have not worked on identifying a funding source for the actual construction project.
No, I meant the, what the potential cost could be on that.
We do, uh, in.
One point.
The actual construction, uh, we're looking at about a million or six. In our share, that would be five eighty. Our, our thirty-five percent share.
Okay, moving on.
So next item on the agenda was, um, the actual approval of the, um, accepting the grant itself. OWRB has allotted funds from FEMA for this grant. At this time, we are looking at, uh, the Phase One portion of the grant, that's a two-phase grant. Uh, this is just for Phase One. Uh, the grant, again, is a sixty-five percent, thirty-five percent, local-funded grant. Um, with the acceptance of the grant, the city of Guthrie will have plans in hand, uh, when needed, at a thirty-five percent cost rather than a hundred percent cost. Guthrie Spillway, uh, received a poor rating back in two thousand nineteen, uh, as inspection due to major undercutting along the retaining wall and the toll of the spillway. Uh, city crews will address and mon, and continue to monitor the deficiencies listed in the dam inspection, uh, reports and hope to continue to extend the life of this, uh, until we can further figure out a plan, how we can come up with funding to move forward with the Phase Two portion.
But kind of a summary, eventually, we're gonna have to do the work.
Yeah.
And so if we can get the plans to go out for bids, sixty-five percent paid for from a grant, then we're that much ahead. We'll put those on the shelf, the plans in hand, and later, when OWRB gets grant money to fund construction, then at that time, we can decide, are we in a funded position to do it? Or do we want to continue to do maintenance and put it off? But at some point, just like the wastewater treatment. But at some point, just like the wastewater treatment, at some point, we're going to have to make these repairs.
Okay. Tenny?
Next item is the geotechnical engineering side of it. Services will be provided for the geotechnical engineering services to evaluate the general subsurface of the condition and develop perimeters for the dam stability, evaluation of the Guthrie Lake Spillway rehabilitation. And the amount of this would be $17,700. Metco would be, who would be performing those engineering studies? And I believe-
Any questions on that?
Any questions on, that's all three of those, so.
So do we approve one-on-one?
You can either approve all three at once or do them one at a time.
I'll entertain a motion to approve items number four, five and six together.
Second.
James?
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval then to move forward with items covered under four, five and six on the agenda. Okay?
Thank you.
Item number seven is discussion, possible action to approve task order 149, Myers Engineering's water systems improvement.
Let me do it, or you want to?
Tenny, again?
Tenny's up.
Task order 149, it's allowing us to, well, it's the Community Block Development Block Grant Program. We just finished up one of these programs, replacing several water lines around town in various areas. Task order 149 will cover a section of water line and valves that run along Division from our water treatment plant facility to Harrison. Our line maintenance department has responded to several leaks along this line. Not having operable valves to shut down the water on this area is extremely crucial to our water system. Task order 149 is for the amount of $29,879. Again, this will just be, you could say, Phase One of this project. And it will cover the design, the DEQ permitting phase and the soliciting portion of it. And then we would, we would come back to you guys if, once we get to the point of actual project staking and stuff like that with an amendment. But this will let us get to the Phase One portion of the project.
And next meeting, this may be a little clearer. But our next meeting, because we had to post notices and stuff, but our next meeting, we will bring in to you to apply for CDBG grant. The construction cost of this project will be $310,800. Engineering, total engineering will be $73,200 and a grant administration of $16,000 for a total project of $400. We will be applying for $199,999 grant money, roughly 50%. And then $200,100 or $200,001 in match. So roughly 50-50%. So we'll be applying, if you approve it, to apply for a $400,000 project with roughly half of it coming from CDBG funds or match, similar to what we did a couple of years ago. And this engineering cost of $28,9879, we have to have plans in hand in order to apply for the grant. And that's what we're doing here, is approving, doing the plans in hand to give us the documentation to apply for the grant. And Billy Vance, our grant writer, will be at our next meeting to walk us through the grant application process that goes with this.
So is this, this includes lines and valves?
Yes, sir.
Lines and valves. Okay, all right.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval to move forward then with task order 149 with Myers Engineering and Water System Improvement. Item number eight, I'd like to call recess now to our Public Works Authority meeting so that we can move forward on some other items that are on our city council meeting and then come back and recall our executive session, item number eight, to the Public Works after we get through with the city council meeting. So I'd like to recess items eight, nine, 10, from the Public Works Authority. And I'll call to order our city council. Item number two is the consent agenda, items A, B, C and D. A is the approval of the minutes of city council, February 2nd meeting. B is the approval of the assignment of a lease of hangar 116A. C is the approval of assignment of lease hangar 20C. And D is the approval of assignment lease hangar 20B. We'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval then to move forward or approve the consent agenda items A, B, C and D. Item number three, discussion, possible action regarding trial service of the Neutron Holdings. We have already discussed that.
We would recommend no action. We just put it on the agenda in case we run out of time in the workshop. We could take it up again under this agenda, but we covered that, so we would recommend no action.
No action taken at this time on item number three. Item number four, discussion, possible action to approve resolution 2021-5, requesting the ACOG consideration of selection of Noble Park Recreation Area as a candidate for the Surrey CERI Planning Demonstration Site. Justin, you handling that?
Sure.
Sure.
ACOG has this new program that they are offering in conjunction with OU's Institute for Quality Communities. And basically, it's just a consulting service to where if we were awarded the service, they would help us develop plans that can be used to apply for grants later down the road. Based on the grant requirements, as well as some things that the city has tried to do before, we thought that it would be great to utilize some ideas that the community had brought forward in the past about making improvements to the Noble, the old Noble Park area for cultural importance, recreational kind of activities. Combining those things with some of the city's previous plans for bicycle pedestrian improvements, trails and such things from the west side of town, Banner Park over to, towards Noble Park, through Noble Park, connecting to the east side of town. Basically, this is a way for us to ask for consulting help to develop cohesive plans for all those things so that we can apply for grant funding in the future. This resolution is basically, it's a requirement through ACOG to be awarded the service. Basically, it's a lot of words to say, hey, that's a good idea on your all's part.
It gives you points up on the grant too, probably, right?
Yeah, and we have to have it in order to be awarded the grant, so.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval then to move forward with the resolution 2021-5 with ACOG submission. Thank you, Justin. Item number five, discussion, possible action to solicit bids concerning the reconstruction of Intersection First and Springer. Tenny, I guess that's probably yours again, or who?
Actually, I think Jeff is-
All right, Jeff.
And I goes, has everybody been down there? Have you all seen this?
Yeah.
Down First Street, okay. That's something that's got to be taken care of. And if you've watched all of our potholes that are popping up everywhere, it's going to be a mess. But that's something we need to look at. And I think Kenny's right, we need to go ahead and whatever we need to do, we need to get it done now.
It's a mess. That's one of the worst.
It is. It is the worst.
That spring energy, there's no way to put brick back in that water.
We talked about it at the retreat. Wasn't that the example that we used at the retreat where we're going to put in stamped concrete instead of brick?
Right.
I thought we had all already decided we were going to move forward with that.
I did too.
Well, there wasn't actually, no action from the council to actually allow us to go out for bid for it. And that's all we're asking for now is action from the council to allow us to solicit bids to move forward with this project. And yes, it would be colored stamped concrete and address all for corner sidewalk approaches to bring them up to ADA compliance.
So we had agreed with the concept but hadn't really approved the going ahead and actually going out for bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes. If you all would look at in your packet, page 210.
210.
Dragging us way down.
Which is the plan sheet 13 of 13, and I can describe it to you.
Okay, go ahead.
But this, this shows that on Springer is asphalt. And so once you leave the actual intersection, we will put asphalt back on Springer because Springer's asphalt. But the intersection, First Street is brick. In the intersection, we will do stamped brick, concrete with a brick pattern. Sidewalks will be brick. But I just want to make sure you all were okay with that because I didn't want to open bids and get ready to award bids and you all say, no, we want to change that and do this or this and this. Kind of want to make sure we're good with this plan before we put it out for bids.
I think we're all on board.
Then plus go.
Hearing none, nothing else, we're on board.
Thank you.
All right, Kenny, thank you. Okay.
You're going to have to vote on it.
We've got to vote.
We already did, didn't we?
I interrupted.
We had a motion in a second before we had.
Yeah, you had second, but you guys-
All right, okay, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to move forward with the actual implementation of reconstructing the intersection of First and Springer. Item number six, we're going into a public hearing now. And I have a public hearing identifying, to determine if properties identified in resolution 2021-4 are dilapidated, detrimental to health and safety, and need to be raised.
So this is the public hearing for resolution 2021-4. I hope you all are okay with going forward like we have in the past, where I go to one property and then we hear from the property owner, their representative.
Yep, and there are a number of people here that want to speak.
All right, this, so the first one on the list was 506 East Lincoln. As far as I can tell, there hasn't been any residents there since 2016. There's been several code enforcement cases there. We've abated the property a couple of times. And as you can see from the pictures, it needs some attention now. Is there anybody here to speak for 506 East Lincoln?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, move on.
610 South Capital. I couldn't find any records of utilities on this one. Is there somebody here that would like to speak for 610 South Capital? 624 East Grant. This one's been since the early 2000s, since it's had utilities. And it's unsecured structure and it needs some attention. Anybody here for 624 East Grant? 701 South Capital, this, as you can see, the roof's in need of repair on this one. And it probably has some substantial structural damage. Is there anybody here for 701 South Capital? 702 East Grant, this is one that we've had a few issues with people entering the house and the house not being secured. Looks like the last known utilities on this one was 2010. Is there anybody here for 702 East Grant?
All right, if you come forward, identify your name, address. Got five minutes at max to speak.
Yes.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is Caesar Rios. I live in 3615 South Division, Guthrie, Oklahoma. We bought this house less than a year ago. And unfortunately, several things come up on my side and my family. So I didn't have no way to approach and start doing some repair, which I mean, there was the actual decision that we had when I bought the house. So my son, he's going to translate several of the stuff.
So what is your plan and what is your timeline?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm his son, so I'm going to help him.
Identify it.
My name's Andy.
Okay, Andy.
So we bought the house in order to fix it and, you know, resell it. COVID thing, COVID hit and then my grandfather passed away. So that put a big step back in this. We haven't gotten around to that. And we still plan on doing it until we got the notice just a couple of weeks ago. And we were just wondering what our options are.
Is this one secure, Bill?
The last time I was there, it was not secure. Options would depend on the council's action tonight. But I'd be more than happy to discuss the timeline of how things work with this process.
Okay, you say you just got the notice?
Yes. Three weeks, before the storm.
So this was originally scheduled for the February 16th meeting. They got canceled because of the going with weather. And so we reposted the houses and reset notifications on that day for the night.
Is that 10-day notice period?
I see, I got you. Okay, all right. Do they know what the process is? Because I'd like for them to know if they don't.
I don't think I've had the opportunity to discuss the process with them. If the council declares the house is dangerous and dilapidated this evening, there will be a 30-business-day timeframe where appeals can be filed to your decision. And at the end of that 30-day process, 30-business-day process is when we would be looking at going out to bids and soliciting bids for demolition and removal. And then once those happen, we would come back to the council to award bids. Yeah, you got a question?
Yeah, when, if we were to go ahead and let's say we go ahead and approve the demolition tonight, he's going to have 30 days to either make an effective response to this or for us to go on with this, what's going to be the process there?
That is correct. That was the, I was laying out the legal process. But the reality is that if, within that 30-business days, if there are building permits pulled for renovation and there's actually progress being made on the property, it would be something that we would allow time for as long as you're making substantial improvements on a regular timeframe.
What does that timeframe want to, I'm sorry?
Well, the first timeframe would be the 30-business days when we come back around and look at all the structures again. And then at that point, it would be incremental as far as the building inspection process goes.
Okay.
So like if they were to go in now and like get everything boarded up and secure, then worry, we don't have an issue there. And then go ahead and come down and start discussions with you on planning for permits and that kind of thing, then you're good with that. And that's a pretty substantial start.
Right. The boarding up of the structure would help for the danger element of an unsecured structure.
But that's not a 30-day, no more than that.
It wouldn't keep it from being a dangerous and dilapidated structure on the 30-business day. You want to see some plans.
Right, but if he's come on into your office and sat down and discussed this with you, you've got a plan and you're working towards something, then you're good.
Correct.
Okay.
They're right.
So if you all go for it, resolute it and condemn it as a dangerous structure, as Bill indicated, there's 30 days. If we would- there's 30 days. And we would ask that they secure it within that 30 days, bring us a plan of action on how long it's gonna take. And it's not gonna be a year. You got to do this quickly. And you got to bring it up to city code. It's not just do cosmetic things. It's got to meet code once we condemn it. So you'd have to have a plan to bring it up to code, and we would work with you as long as you make substantial progress each month. But if we go out there in 30 days and you've taken one, fixed one window, that's not substantial progress.
Right.
And so, you have to make substantial progress. And as long as you have a plan that's a reasonable length of time, you make substantial progress on each month, we will not put it out for bids for demolition. And then, if, once you get it to code, then we will release the lien that we put on the property through the condemnation and take it off the list. But if you say we go two months and you've done very little work, then we'll put it on the bid for demolition.
Now, another option is you can, you can demo it. If that was, if that was gonna be the case, we don't have to, we'd prefer you to demo it. If it verse, I'm just saying, if it's gonna go to a demolition status, all right?
Right.
We would rather have you do it than us do it. Because if we do it, it's gonna, you're gonna pay whatever our demolition fee was, and it's gonna go tagged to the property.
Okay.
If you do it, that's not there.
And I'd point out that same process would work for all the structures we're talking about.
So that's something to think about, you know?
So it would still stay on the dilapidated, dangerous building and be on this resolution. But you do have some options that were, have just been addressed to you. Do you understand? Do you understand?
Yes, yes, I understand. Well, just 30 days, we're gonna try to do the demolition then.
If you're gonna do that, then your property doesn't get attached, and you at least end up with the land at the end of the day to be able to do something with.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Exactly what we're gonna do.
All right.
All right. If you contact me, I'll get you a demolition permit application.
Okay.
It'll be the first step in the process.
I think so. That's the only thing we gotta do.
Thank you.
Okay. Bill, you got, got others?
806 East Warner. This structure suffered a fire in January of 2019. I believe the, did he step out?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just say that after talking with us and understanding exactly what you explained and Leroy explained, he was comfortable with that. And so he'll probably be in contact with us.
919 East Grant. I couldn't find any records of utilities on this one. The owner has contacted me, I believe. They're here tonight.
Hold on.
We've got.
I'm not 806, I'm at 1007 East Vilas.
Okay, then the, it didn't get updated in the packet. Sorry about that.
We did the packet on Friday. That one was left out of the packet.
So Grant is an add-on?
That's.
It's on the, it's on the resolution, it's on the notice.
All right.
It got left out of your paperwork.
All right.
I missed that one when I did the presentation originally.
Okay.
Would you like to speak to the council?
Which one?
919 East Grant.
Okay. Identify, sir, your name and your address, and what structure you're speaking on.
Yes, my name is Parrish Pierce. I stay at 402 East Vilas, Guthrie, Oklahoma. And I'm here with the 919 East Grant property.
Okay.
It's a family inherited property. At this time, I've been, like he's mentioned before, I had been assessing to see what's going on. I got caught of the notice because the mail didn't come to me. It went to my auntie, who just recently passed away. Now that I know what's going on, we've been trying to assess. And, you know, I need extensions in order to make sure I get a proper assessment of what I can do moving forward, in which he's been more than kind to help me along the way throughout this process. Right now, I don't, I don't, I know very little. I have did some cosmetic things just to make it safe and put no trespassing signs on the property. Because, you know, that's the last thing I would want to do from what I found out. But moving forward, of course, like I said, I just listened to, to how the process works, which I appreciate. But I'm just currently just working on trying to figure out how we can assess and move on forward with the property.
What do you think you want, I'm sorry, Steve.
Well, I, go ahead.
No.
Don't, I gotta, I gotta see. The first things first, from what I did notice is that I have to clean it out from the inside, and would have to get a bid and start doing that, that matter of work first. From what I understand, there were add-ons to this property a long time ago when I was probably a kid. So a lot of that, part of the property is what's dilapidated and caving in because there was no pitches on the, on the roof line. So, but on the inside, I mean, like I said, that's the first thing, is taking a piece at a time. Of course, financially, right now, we had, and with everything going on, have to take it a step at a time while trying to make sure that I adhere to what we trying to do today. That's the biggest process right now. Is trying to make sure that I can appease the council, but at the same time, be reasonable as far as where we are right now financially.
Okay. And you've, you've heard the, the requirements, if you will, both in terms of timing, timing the nest?
Yes, yes, showing, showing progress. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Pierce?
That's it?
Well, that's it. You will, the property will stay on the list.
Yes.
Your, your next move?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next structure is 1007 East Vilas. Is there somebody here for this one? Would you like to address the council on it?
I'm Arlene Stevenson, 1720 East College Evan Department 2. And this is the property of my dad, Samuel Stevenson. And what's, what's happening here is that property is listed with my brother and sister's name on, on the property, Brian, which is deceased, and Diana, which live in Houston. And my dad has an attorney at this time, and the information to the removal of Brian and Diane's name off that property, that's in the Logan County's office up there, at the court clerk. The attorney took the information there to remove Diane's name, and it's still in the process. Because I did call the attorney and asked her, you know, why, you know, the names were still on there. And she said it's in the process. So that's all I can tell you. But I do know that my dad is trying to make sure that those two are removed off that property because he does eventually want to do away with the, with the house.
Demolish it, tear it down?
Yeah, uh-huh. And then, and then, and then his house, he's gonna do that as well and rebuild. You see what I'm saying?
So he has both pieces of land right next to each other?
Yeah, all is his, uh-huh. And so that's, that's his intention. But that's, that's in the courthouse.
First, you gotta get it in your name.
His name. Yeah. He gotta get their name off of there so he could proceed to do what he needs to do. So I don't know what he needs to do or how he should go about it because it is gonna eventually get tear down. You see what I'm saying? And then, he gonna do the, his, his actual house, cause he wants to rebuild there. And then, and then, the builder that he been talking with, you know, like I said, the name, I don't know how y'all go about it, and about names being on property and how, you know. But like I said, it is in the Logan County courthouse.
You have a lawyer that's, that's working?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah. Yeah, she's in the, her name is Cynthia D. Antonio. And she had been up here at the courthouse to present, you know, the removal. And being my brother's ex-wife, she, you know, cause my brother's deceased. He's deceased. He been deceased since 2016. So she had to get the wife to, you know, sign papers, whatever you call it, you know, to get his name off of there.
It's, it's not secure now, is it?
It's just in, it's in bad shape.
Yeah, uh-huh. With trees and stuff coming out. And see, I know what he talking about, but this is the, this is the stickler right here. And I mean, I could call her again and see if she get that process moved. But she been up here and she, cause I asked, she said she's waiting for, I guess, whatever they need to do. Because first of all, whatever they need to do.
Can't the sister just quick claim it over?
Huh?
Can't the sister just quick?
Yeah, she did. But see, the brother is deceased, so the wife, and so the attorney filed it. And see, and it haven't even got to the upstairs, to the county clerk to put in the book, you know, to, you know, the procedure, whatever. But, but all I know is, if y'all can tell me what I need to do, get back with her, or, you know, something. Cause I already know, but like I said, he gonna eventually demolish it. You see what I'm saying?
But you need, you need to make sure that you're communicating with Bill's office.
Okay, cause this the first time I ever seen him.
Okay, and to make sure that they know what's going on.
Okay, okay.
Because I, I understand that this is a convoluted process, but we still aren't gonna be able to take all kinds of time to make that happen.
Right, right.
Because it, it is a dangerous piece of property as it stands right now.
Well, it's already there.
Yeah.
Well, is there a court order to say in this? That's another thing that you might want to bring to Bill, something from the court that says they're working this thing.
Yeah, well, I, I could go up there and get it. I mean, well, let me tell me what I need to do.
At this point, if they're tearing it down.
What I'd recommend is for her, the attorney, to contact Bill, give us some timeline that they think it's gonna take to clear the title, clear up any title issues. Once we know that, then we can work out a reasonable schedule for them to demolish it themselves if they want to do that. And, and so, once we talk to that attorney, hopefully, we can work some kind of schedule out that we can all live with.
So this would still stay on the list?
Stay on the list. We just need their attorney to contact us so we can have some idea of when you all will have the title cleaned up. And then, we'll come up with the schedule from there. And hopefully, we can work something out that's agreeable to everybody. But once we come up with that schedule, you'll need to live with it.
Right. Cause like, like, like I understood, I understand that the demolition can be done by, by the owner, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, okay. That's what I'm gonna make sure.
Okay.
Well, I just want to clarify that this is gonna require a quiet title or a probate.
It's gonna have to be an action. This isn't an attorney visiting the county clerk or the court clerk. This is gonna take a legal action. And I'm not even certain at this point, a legal action has been filed.
Oh, I thought that's what she did up there with court.
Yeah, but to, to move this exactly.
It's not, it's not, you don't file to remove. You have to either quiet the title or probate the property. So I think we have a disconnect on what's, what process is happening.
Yeah, I think, Ms. Stevenson, I think the key is to have the attorney that is involved, the lawyer that's involved, have a dialogue with our staff.
Okay.
And for her to tell him exactly what's going on.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay. Thank you for that. It's gonna stay on the list. We're gonna move forward. That, that communication has to happen. And the staff will.
Okay.
And if I don't manage to message them.
Okay. So you will be having a comment?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Stevenson, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
The next house on the list is 1102 West Manser. It suffered a fire October 22nd of last year. Is there anybody here for 1102 West Manser? 1218 West Noble. And I believe somebody's here to speak about this one.
All right, sir. Identify yourself and your address.
My name is John Goodwin Jr. I live at 1215 West Warner. This property belongs to my mother and dad. My dad's 90 years old and my mother's 88. Anyway, I pulled a permit last year to work the porch on this house. And what is protruding on side of the house is a side porch that used to be a screen porch that my dad had put some masonite siding on, and then some little storm windows where my mother could do quilt work. And that roof had give way. But it's not the actual structure of the house. It's a porch, same way as the porch on the front.
That one on the left?
Yes.
Yeah, I see it.
This, that one here.
Yeah.
It protruding outside. It had little storm windows on it. And that was a porch that just went because none of the door were just inside. It goes into the house.
Uh-huh.
In the house. And he can probably verify, on the other side had been plywooded open windows because we had a couple of kids, probably plastic, blazing all, and get into the house. So we secured the house, the front door and the back door, and the side. But anyway, like I said, I did pull permit and worked on, and wound it, covered it down. And with a bunch of rain and everything else. And as you know, once you catch COVID, you're not getting over very quick. But I do need to pull another permit and get the front porch and get the thing cleaned up. Because where he seen clothing inside on that little porch, that was where my mother had stuffed for making patch quilts. And it's really not that big a deal because the house is a sound house.
So your, your first, your, your next step is to remove the front and side porch areas?
Remove the side porch area mainly. And if I have to, I'll take it front off. But I've got the lumber to repair the front porch and the plywood. Because the lumber is stacked on the sidewalk at the back of the house covered with the tarp. And the plywood is in the house.
All right.
Well, it tells that we're gonna be giving you 30 days to, to do things going on.
But I do need to pull, pull another permit because, like I said, you know, I had intended on not letting it go as long as it has gone, you know. Because here's, here's a receipt where I purchased the first.
That, that's, that's fine. You can, you can, you can give that to Bill and staff.
Hang on to that. We'll get you another one issue. You come on by.
Because we're gonna have the dumpster set there.
Okay.
Start working on it.
All right, Mr. Goodman. But you, you understand it's, you're, the, the.
Yes.
The property is still gonna be listed here. You need to be making timely and, and appropriate.
Yeah. Plus, plus we've got to start painting on it too.
Okay. All right.
Good luck to you.
Good.
We have no problem.
If you can rehab it, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, did I have a card on you? No, I've got, I've got my card on the other guy.
Yeah. Either, either number, my number's on that notice.
Right.
And the other card is at the same office.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
The next one's 1507 East Vilas. I don't know if anybody's here for this one or not. When we posted this house, the homeowner, he lives across the street, and he came out and he expressed his intentions on removing the structure himself. 1501 West Noble. It's got holes in the roof, broken windows on the front. I don't believe anybody's here for this one. I do know that it's recently been put up for sale.
It is currently on the market, has multiple offers that are all, and final offers are due tomorrow. So I do know that.
Cool.
Yeah. And.
It still has to stay on the list, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The final one is 1502 West Cleveland. And it's my understanding this one's under contract. But anyways, it has holes in the roof. It's, the pictures aren't real good.
And if it changes ownership in the process, this condemnation carries forward, and we will record this at the courthouse with the lien until it's resolved one way or the other. But if it changes ownership, we will work with the new owner just like we would with the prior one.
I, I would think the challenge is just identifying the new owner so that that communication can happen.
We have told the individuals trying to sell it that they needed to make sure all potential buyers was aware that it was under this process.
Okay.
We'll be recording that.
Yes. Yes. All right, that's the end of it, uh, do y'all have any questions?
Is there anybody here that wanted to speak on any other property here, on any of the properties? Okay, all right.
Just for the record, Bill, uh, I know you've done all these things, but just want to document that we sent the ten days notice out before the last meeting.
Yes.
And because the last meeting got canceled, we sent a second ten day notice out that we have posted on the property. And there is no mortgage holders on any of these properties.
There is one mortgage holder on seven oh two, uh, let me back up, but the mortgage holder was notified as well. The property owner contacted me and told me that their uh intentions were to uh dem- dem- uh demo the property themselves.
Okay, but we didn't notify the mortgage holder.
It was seven oh one South Capitol.
We might want to put that in the minutes that we sent the notices and stuff.
Okay. Good. All right, I'll entertain a motion then to uh move forward with uh resolution two zero two one dash four, dilapidated uh buildings as presented to us this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to move forward with that resolution twenty twenty-one dash four. Item number seven, discussion, possible action to approve, uh, oh, that, I'm sorry. That uh that I I needed to close the public hearing, actually. Uh, and then I'll restate it because uh actually we're, uh, item number seven is the uh approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash four on the uh dilapidated danger structures. I'll entertain a motion to approve. And a second.
Carolyn.
I did.
We just had to redo it because it's a different item number. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then uh to uh move forward uh with resolution twenty twenty-one dash four. Item number uh eight, uh discussion, possible action regarding Senate Bill uh one zero three one, reinstating virtual me- meetings allowed by cities and towns. Leroy, you handling that?
Uh, I am, I guess the first question is, do we want to go to video conference meetings or virtual meetings? Or do we want to keep using this format?
Well, we're almost past the that point at this, aren't we?
We've made it this far, we must live.
Okay.
I think.
Cause otherwise, if we were gonna go to video conferencing, there's some um technical issues that we would need to talk and work out. But if we're not gonna go to virtual meetings and keep doing in-person meetings, we don't even need to talk about it.
But if uh if if, for instance, we have, for some reason, we have a huge spike that happens in our in our whole area, we can we can still reconsider it at a later date.
Yes, and but at that time.
Allowing us to do it.
Yeah, at that time, we would have to make sure we go through the mechanics. Like, for example, when we do the agenda, we have to say who's gonna be at the meeting site, who's gonna be remotely video conference in. If you say you're gonna be at the site, uh, and then you decide, no, I'm gonna video conference in, you can't do that. If you say you go video conference in, you can come to the site. So there's a lot of mechanics that we'll need to work through at that time. We can't decide on Friday, next Tuesday, we're gonna have a video conference meeting. There would be some planning that we would need to do.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll entertain a motion then, then we continue with our in in person uh meetings of uh Guthrie Public Works Authority, our uh city council, uh and uh and other businesses that the city council has to entertain.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to continue with our in-person meeting structures. Um, item number nine, city manager report.
I've got uh some items first, I'm gonna have Tenny Baker give us an update on our response to the October uh twenty twenty ice storm.
Okay. We put together a few numbers here for us to go over, as well as provided the same map that we had covered last time at, I guess it had been our last meeting. Um, so a percentage of our town roughly that we've completed is a roughly right at twenty or seventy-five percent uh for the first round. Um, total cubic yards is right at sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty cubic yards. And right as of right now, we've got uh estimated completion time is uh the end of March. And this is as well been shared with FEMA as well as a completion time. Um, the the area in pink is what we had done the first go around that we presented to you guys. And then everything in orange is what we've completed since the first go around. And our map actually expands all the way down to the south portion of the city limits as well. This is just the more uh dense portion of our our city. Uh, a lot of our area down south, other than the immediate um housing additions, majority of it does not have much tree limbs on it, it's just the immediate uh additions. So it'll move fairly quickly once we get started moving south. Um, options that we still have available for the citizens, um, they can still bring our debris, bring their debris to our convenience center site uh and drop it off at free of charge yet. And then yet, we also still have the uh utility trash service, waste connections, that that's still available for the regular trash routes. They can follow the regulations that's provided there and uh put limbs out. And the trash service will pick them up on uh Monday's trash route, uh first Wednesday, Tuesday's trash route, second Wednesday, Thursday's trash route is third Wednesday, and Friday's trash day is the fourth Wednesday. It's a bulk pickup and the trash service will actually pick them up if they follow those guidelines, if if they'd like quicker response than what we've been able to provide today. Um, to go over a few numbers that has been brought to our actual collection site by residents, um, total cubic yards was is right at eleven thousand sixty-two cubic or cubic yards. And as of today, one hundred percent, well, other than what we've brought in today, a hundred percent of the brush has been burned. Um, our air curtain incinerator that we're using, it's still performing good, we're pleased with it. We did have one issue with it, it popped up a co- a code, an error code during the real, real cold weather. The rental company responded out, they cleared the code and everything's back to normal. Um, status with FEMA right now, we're meeting on, meeting with FEMA every week. Um, we're gathering uh information on our category A, which is the debris removal. Um, they've requested us to submit every bit of our debris removal, all as one item under category A. So, once we get to that point, we'll submit everything at one time. Um, category B is emergency response and um we have every bit of that information gathered and we'll be res- uh submitting it to FEMA real quick, like uh our generator, we did submit our generator at our wastewater treatment plant to try to get it covered underneath our FEMA response uh for damages. We did lose our uh generator at the wastewater treatment plant during this storm. Um, some of the documents and stuff that they had us go back to as far as uh through our elite power, which does all of our servicing of the generator, it reflected some decline of that generator over a period of time that then didn't qualify it for one hundred percent of that generator uh going out during the ice storm, so it was, it's been removed off of that. I don't know if I had brought that up to you guys in the past or not, but that item has been removed off and we're gonna just move forward with it with the wastewater treatment plant plans, it was in the the plans. We were just seeing if we could get it as part of that FEMA project. It's kind of where we stand right now with it. Um, we have a rust estimate as far as what we're looking at as of today for reimbursement. And these numbers are only uh public works, uh equipment and man hours. And right now, we're sitting right around a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, which will be all reimbursed through FEMA. So uh it's kind of where we're standing right now. Uh, crews are moving every day, we're back to going. I know we've had, we've had some calls with concerns as far as getting trees removed um when we're getting to certain areas. We've just finished up all of the Shady Creek Circle, Pin Oak area over there, and we'll start back on this uh southeast quadrant right there of the real dense portion of the neighborhood. Noble um is, I know, a big eyesore right now because they're out on the state highway. We've discussed this week, um, whether or not, couple of options. I visited with the police chief as far as getting their assistance to help with traffic control so we can get in there and remove that that debris. Or we're considering maybe doing it uh early morning hours when traffic's down so we can get in and just get it cleared out of there and and not affect traffic, is kind of where we're at. And we'll look at probably doing that sometime this week, whether we include the PD or whether we do it at early morning hours.
So kinda in summary, um, we should finish round one by the end of March. And for those that are getting impatient and don't want to wait, those that have the ability have a couple of options. They can either haul it to the disposal site themselves and dispose of it free, or they can cut them up and bundle them and get rid of them through their uh waste service through waste connection. So they do have a couple of options if they're getting impatient and don't want to wait till the end of March. Uh, secondly, through the residential curbside, sixteen thousand four hundred eighty cubic yards. Residents have held a little over eleven thousand. So we've addressed twenty-seven thousand five hundred cubic yards of debris, storm debris uh at the site and got rid of it. That doesn't include the storm debris from all of our city-owned property. That's not in that number. And I don't know if we have an estimate of that or not, but uh.
I don't have that actual number with me tonight, but we do have those numbers.
What we picked up in all our parks, cemeteries, like those kind of things. And it also doesn't include all the commercial, that's just the residential that we dealt with, the numbers. Uh, so it it was a significant event.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, actually, the end of March was uh was our was our plan. Uh, I think we're, so we're pretty much on target, are we not?
I feel, yeah, we are. I mean, that was our original date that we had to provide to FEMA that as a completion date. Um, I would have liked to have said that we could have been done by February, but again, we've kind of planned for the storms that we've had and other events that we've had to take care of as well. Um, yeah, our original date was March from the beginning.
I I think you and your staff have done a a fantastic job under very difficult circumstances. Uh, and uh and greatly appreciate it, greatly appreciate it. Um, do we ha- is there a backup plan if for some some reason things start to slow down a little bit? Because when we start getting into people mowing around debris and then, of course, all of your folks, they've got uh public grasses that they're gotta start maintaining here too as we get into the growing season. Um, is there, do we have a backup plan if things if things start to get delayed?
We can always reach re- reach out to the contractors that we had uh reached out to in the early stages of the storm and and always look at those options as far as getting them to mobilize in here and and remove stuff if we need to, yes.
But you're gonna be done the end of Mar- this month anyway.
I'm comfortable with us being able to be done by the end of March.
Good, great, great. All right, great report. Leroy, anything else?
Second item, uh, Justin's going to do a report on the hundred thousand dollar sector partnership grant.
Uh, as y'all know, uh, Meridian Technology is well on their way to building their South Division campus. One of the programs they decided to offer there at that campus will be uh training classes for film and television uh personnel. So if someone's interested in that line of work, they can go take classes at that South Campus to uh to get gain those skills to work in that industry. Um, Leroy was able to see a, uh, he saw that the Oklahoma Office of Workforce Development was offering grant opportunities to to boost workforce development programs around the state. And so Leroy brought together folks from Meridian, uh, the city, the Guthrie Chamber, and the Logan County Economic Development Council. And that committee met and determined that uh this was a great fit for supporting and uh basically helping Meridian uh plan and launch that program. Uh, Shonda Rooney with the city was able to be the grant writer for the the proposal. She did a great job putting it all together uh with a ton of help from Rebecca Eastman with Meridian. And then one of the requirements for that grant was that uh the fiscal agent or the the program manager couldn't be a a government entity. So uh we asked Brittany with the chamber, if the chamber could be the fiscal agents. Basically, they had, they get to have the fun of wrangling all the paperwork and and the chamber was willing to do that. So the chamber will be the fiscal agent uh and kind of managing all the the bureaucracy of the the grant. And over the next year, uh, the team of the the city, chamber, and Meridian, and Logan County County Economic Development Council, that team, in conjunction with a number of uh film and television partners that we've worked with in the past, will work together to to plan for that program as well as work on curriculum development, uh, hiring an outside consultant to work on launching that program. As well, there's also some funding in in here for uh marketing of those those classes, that training. Uh, and uh the possibility of having some scholarships available for folks to 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 hop on board as it launches. And I I believe that campus is still on schedule for launching January of twenty-two. Um, so, but a hundred thousand dollars uh into the community uh with with no matching dollars required. So it was, it's a great deal. So uh thanks to for to Meridian for having the idea of offering that training. Uh, Shonda did a great job organizing and writing the grant. And uh thanks to Brittany over at the chamber for being willing to wrangle the the annoying parts of paperwork for that grant.
Great, great team effort, congratulations. Uh, this was also recognized last week at the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments that uh that 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 grant had been awarded and got a great applause there.
Oh, great, so uh there were five grants awarded across the state. Uh, ours was one, uh, ACOG was ordered one to work on solar and battery technology. Uh, let's see, Central Oklahoma Manufacturers Alliance got a grant for manufacturing, Manufacturing Skills Academy. Um, Premier Logistics in Tulsa is working on something, I don't know. Um, Heavy Metal Training Institute in northeast, Northeast Oklahoma is working on trucking industry job training.
Very good.
Job.
Well, again, great, great job by all involved, all involved.
Uh, last time I had, um, of course, we heard uh Shonda Rooney just out of college, so it it's taken a while for her to uh put roots down and get started. But it, as you just heard from Justin, she was the lead writer on this grant application that got funded. And I just want to point out, uh, uh, last Friday, we turned in a response to Department of Commerce on a detailed request or information for a pretty large industrial prospect with a substantial number of employees. And this request for information was multiple pages long, the questions they asked. And Shonda took the lead and put in a good response. Don't mean we'll get the industry, but but I just want to make sure you all know that Shonda continues to grow and develop professionally and she's starting to pay some dividends to us on her work effort.
Very good.
Could she eventually take place of the grant writers that we bring in as on a percentage basis?
Um, it depends on the grant, um, on the CDBG grant that Millie does that we do bring in.
Right.
Uh, community development block grants and HUD grants are the most involved, pain in the butt, detailed grants that you can ever get. And the the sixteen to twenty thousand we pay Millie is worth it compared to the time. I mean, I've done CDBG grants since nineteen seventy-nine, and I can tell you, they are very time-consuming. The one, other than the CDBG, we pretty much administer and write our own grants. Uh, Shonda will be doing several of them, but then there are times because of special expertise, uh, Dan actually prepared a grant uh for the sophomore. uh, Dan, uh, actually prepared a grant, uh, for the softball fields, the land and water conservation fund grant, which I think will be announced, so whether we got it in the, probably the next thirty days. Uh, so sometimes we, we have different ones writing based on their expertise and their time availability. But yes, she will be doing some other grants. That's all I had.
Fantastic. Okay. Anybody have any questions, Leroy?
No.
Okay, item number ten, uh, comments from the city council. Vice Mayor Case?
I don't have the case.
No? No. Councilman Long?
I just want to, uh, thank Public Works Department for everything that they have done, especially going through the whole San Antonio loss, and they had, you know, work late at night to repair the water lines. I wouldn't want to be out there working in the cold and the water and all that, so I really appreciate everything that they do.
Councilman Taylor?
I'll second that. I, I just was going to check did, uh, buy Chris Evans any new shoes, since he had to stand in the water out there, but anyway, no, thanks, guys. I really appreciate it. That's a lot of work. It's cold, it's, everybody, I'm sure everybody's temperature was dropped down below zero, so that was not fun. Potholes are starting to show up, so if you've got a bunch of them, be nice when you, you know, call in and talk to Tenny and the guys and let them know, but don't yell at them about it. We know about it. We know the street's bad. And then eighty-niners, uh, we're going to kick that off, so, uh, April the seventeenth at noon, we're going to take off and see what happens. That's it.
Councilwoman Patrick?
Well, I can't beat those remarks, so I'll just say, thank goodness, Tenny, my trash is gone. I am a happy camper.
Councilman Channel?
I rolled up at one in the morning and looked down the hole at those guys when it was twelve degrees outside, but I didn't open the door and get out. No, y'all were killers on that, the one over at Pine and Noble, all of that stuff. Um, you know, the pots wouldn't flush up here if it wasn't for you guys out there. I do want to go on record, when we get the lime scooters, I'm buying the first ten bucks of Case's ride on one. So, we're going to go live on that.
And then we'll film it.
Yeah.
Very good.
Take the first one.
Very good. Councilman Bathory?
Ditto on it all. I mean, it was historic, apparently. You know, on the weather that we had, and I think everybody just did a great job. That's it for me.
Okay, um, we've, we, uh, my usual comments about, uh, we've got a number of vacancies on various boards and commissions. Uh, Board of Adjustment, Parks, Planning, Airport, uh, there might be one other that I missed in there. Uh, but, uh, we need the citizens to, um, to be engaged. This is a really, really good way to do it, to be a part of Team Guthrie, uh, to be a part, uh, of, of making input and making us better. So, uh, get on the, the City of Guthrie website. It identifies what all of those boards and commissions do. Uh, it identifies also how to go ahead and make application. But again, Board of Adjustment, Parks, Planning, Airport are the ones that I had listed. Uh, again, following up on Jeff, uh, the week of, uh, April thirteenth to seventeenth, seventeenth of, uh, of April will be the parade. Thirteenth, right now, is scheduled to be the chuck wagon. That's the Tuesday. Uh, there's a meeting, uh, at noon tomorrow at the American Legion, if you want to come and, uh, and, uh, give us, uh, ideas, uh, and also lend some help. It's a volunteer effort, as always. Um, but, um, and we're running, uh, uh, on a short fuse because of the time, uh, issue. But right now, everything is on go. Um, looking forward to making it a very successful thing uh, for the community, uh, for, uh, the American Legion and everybody involved. Uh, again, thanks to the crews, uh, that have been, uh, just, uh, incredibly good, uh, in, uh, in difficult circumstances and repairing mains and, and picking up debris and, and just doing all of the great things that, that, uh, quite honestly, I think sometimes we take for granted because they do such a good job. Uh, and so just really, really appreciate that. And also, also I'd like to thank the volunteers that are involved with the, with the Logan County Health Department in giving the COVID shots. Um, I don't know if, I don't know how many of you are getting comments. I get a lot of comments about people that are calling from all over the state saying, you know, we hear that, that Logan County is really doing a great job, and, and, uh, so I appreciate that, uh, if you, it, it, they can always use some more volunteers. But again, thanks to those people, and if you know the volun, some of the volunteers that work there, give them a pat on the back, if you would, please. Um, and last thing, wear the mask, keep the social distance, um, don't get too complacent. We've still got a ways to go with this COVID. I think it's always going to be with us. Uh, with the, with the shots, I think, uh, obviously, things will, we're turning the corner. That's all I have. Uh, okay, item number, uh, eleven, uh, consider approval to convenient to executive session uh, for purposes of discussing a potential three-year extension for the city manager uh, and, uh, the Guthrie Public Works, uh, general manager, uh, extending his contract for three years. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to move into executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, we will see you-